All right, let's get this meeting started. Make note that everybody's here. And we are going, I know you're thinking we're gonna get right off, but we're gonna start off in an executive session for about five minutes. Right? Is that what I'm right? I think so, five minutes. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551-071. So give us five minutes and we'll be right back. Somebody will time us, I'm sure. Okay, I broke a campaign promise. I was in there for 12 minutes. Sorry about that. So we'll move on and we'll start off with the citizens forum. We have Brent Heatherly from Georgetown Commons.
I was looking at your agenda here. I didn't know if you could speak now or once later.
Are you wanting to speak on the development? Are you wanting to speak on little improvements on Little Road?
Why, I'm asking first to account for the recent center of the track. It's like there's gonna be a lot of things going on a while there that you want to talk about.
Okay, then hang on until we get to that part. Would you hang on until we get to that agenda item?
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just hang on to that. Okay, thank you. All right, item A, consider an ordinance 683 adopting a fine-free structure. We talked about that the last council meeting. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve ordinance 683?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 683.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please enter your vote. All right, receive a report and hold discussion regarding types of past and future residential development in relation to the comprehensive plan. This is Melissa Daly. She's gonna talk about, a little bit, about multifamily housing.
Okay, thank you very much. I did wanna, since you do have several cases before you, I wanted to kinda circle back a little bit and talk about the comprehensive plan and talk about the market a little bit as it relates to some of the types of developments you are considering both tonight and possibly future developments. So as a reminder, our 2012 comprehensive plan is what we utilize for looking at zoning cases and other types of decisions, economic development decisions that we make in the city. And the plan adopted a preferred growth scenario, which was really intended to be kinda the best of both worlds. It was intended to have certain areas of the city that could have a mix of uses, different kinds of housing, but also other areas of the city that could have, for example, larger lot developments and consideration of the greenways, which as you know is a program we're working on too with the National Park Service, but looking at the potential greenways through the city utilizing, for example, the creeks that run through the city. So it was a combination of what was called new urbanism and green infrastructure that really considered particular areas where you could have different kinds of development. In looking at that potential, the goals that were considered were promoting access to housing, different kinds of housing, access to jobs, and a staple and equitable tax base. So those three principles were pretty important in guiding the, or setting up the goals for the comprehensive plan. And so in looking at that, the land use, existing land use at that time, and this has shifted a little bit since more single-family has come in, but at that time in 2012, we had 0.2% multifamily and related, we had 0.2% of office and 1.7% of retail. And it's related because different kinds of development, particularly some higher-density developments in particular areas that make sense can draw in that retail commercial development. And we've heard a lot of that from the community, from citizens, that we want to see more retail development. And so those are very related. And along with that, we have had at that time 28.3% vacant land, so an opportunity to guide your city in terms of how you want that to develop. So the city has seen a lot of single-family additions, and this is not meant to be comprehensive. I'm sure that I probably missed a few, but just wanted to just give kind of a quick summary, of course, started, the city started with Old Town in the mid-1940s, and there's a mix of housing in Old Town from the 40s up to fairly recent infill development. 1983 at Crestdale, then Shady Creek, Steeplechase, Shady Creek East in 99, Falconwood, Brookstone Neighborhood, Oak Hill Park Neighborhood in the 2000s, Beacon Hill, and then more recently Winding Creek and Falcon Crest, Glenna Village Creek, Hilltop, the Vineyards, and then of course coming is Magnolia Hills. So the city's done a really good job of attracting single-family neighborhoods. But what we haven't really focused a lot on yet is that mixed-use or multifamily development to create a variety of housing. This is kind of an interesting study that was done by a company called Urban Three, and they looked at 60 different cities, including two in Texas, and they compared property taxes per acre for those different cities on different kinds of, looking at different kinds of developments, so residential, commercial, and mixed-use. And the residential is in blue, and it started with the baseline for county residential, so that tends to be larger lot homes, and that's your baseline of a dollar. And then city, single-family, that's 550, so that means the city, single-family, which tend to be smaller lot homes than in the county, that brings in about five times the revenue per acre as county. And they looked at Walmart and commercial development, and then you move into the mixed-use, which almost always has residential use. Then you jump to 4780 an acre, so that's for a two-story building. So if you look at probably the single-family we're at for the city, which is at 550, mixed-use brings in about nine times the tax value for the same area of land. I've heard a lot stated that mixed, that multifamily development tends to bring property values down, it tends to bring the area down, and that just really hasn't been in the case in the last several decades. This has been not a new trend, but something that's been going on for decades in terms of going back to sustainable quality development of multifamily. And so I thought I'd show just a few examples here locally. This particular picture is Berry Street in Fort Worth, and the picture in the black and white is from 1978, and there was an effort about 15 years ago to redevelop and redesign that quarter. And interestingly, this is about the same size as Kennedale Parkway in terms of the width of that quarter. And it was redesigned and streets gave put in, and along with that, we saw multifamily come in. And this multifamily is about 10 years old, it looks the same as it did when it went in. They typically have a waiting list to get into these apartments here, and it has really done a lot to also bring retail. There's CVS and Walgreens that has come in across the street, and there's a Hyatt Place going in a block east of that development. So it hasn't brought property values down, rather it's been a catalyst for development. This is actually, the city of Fort Worth recently rezoned this development. This is Caville redevelopment. This is in southeast Fort Worth, so this is an area of the city that's been in a, I don't wanna say decline, but it's not improved in many, many decades. And so the city adopted a redevelopment plan, and that development plan includes 1,000 residential units to include apartments, townhomes, and walk-up garden apartments. So that's a critical part of this redevelopment plan in an effort to make sure that the office, the retail, the other commercial development is viable. It brings people to the community in the immediate vicinity 24/7. When people come in, when the, to a higher-density development, they bring that activity level 24/7, which allows for the retail to work better. So these are some of the renderings that, for that anticipated development. And you'll notice that there is a variety of types of housing for that development. This is another one that's recently gone in. This has been marketed as District 90, it's at Berry and 8th. This is another sort of depressed area that's now under redevelopment. So one of the first things that went in were these apartments that have now also brought in commercial development across the street from it. So it's been a real catalyst for development there. And I imagine you're probably familiar with the near south side in Fort Worth, and when apartments go in there, they are really celebrated because they do bring retail development around it. And so the one on the left, which included a public art feature, if you haven't seen it, it's really kinda amazing, this is on Magnolia called Mag and May Apartments. The intention is to bring retail to that end of Magnolia, and I believe that will happen. And then the Cooper Apartments has gone in, the Monarch Apartments, those have all brought retail to those areas, as have townhomes. These are some townhomes that are in the near south side that were developed as well. These are townhomes on Henderson that came in following the Firestone Apartments. You may be familiar with these. I've heard it stated that apartments always go downhill. These were built 20 years ago, and when you have an area that's built in a sustainable way that meets the kind of design standards that we have in our multifamily, it makes a difference, and it makes for sustainable development that lasts and brings retail to that area. Same thing with Summit Avenue, which has been a pretty underdeveloped quarter in Fort Worth, and we're seeing that multifamily that's now starting to really draw the commercial development as well. And I think this is an interesting example of multifamily that has gone in into Clearfork, where you have some of the highest-valued retail with stores like Neiman Marcus, and you have apartments that are an integral part of that retail, and they're integral because they bring that 24/7 activity. And they have continued to build apartments, there's some that are under construction currently. Samuel's Avenue is another example where you've seen a combination of townhomes and apartments. This is an area that was previously pretty depressed for decades, and over the last 20 years has seen a complete redevelopment in this area with a combination of single-family, townhomes, and apartments. So we have the opportunity here in particular areas, this doesn't make sense for every area, but it does make sense for commercial quarters. And the examples that I just showed you are really on these similar types of commercial quarters. So we have these opportunities on, like Kennedale Parkway, Little School Road, Bowman Springs, Kennedale Sublet, these commercial quarters that make sense for a combination of commercial and higher-density residential. And we have that opportunity to not only provide different kinds of housing, but also to attract the very needed office development, which brings jobs and retail. So looking at some of the things that were stated, I wanted to address that as it relates to multifamily. Multifamily has a negative impact on school districts. Well, the fact is multifamily, this is a Harvard study that was done in 2007. Multifamilies' developments house an average of 29 children per 100 units versus 64 in single-family neighborhoods per 100 units. So multifamily actually pays more in taxes and has fewer children, which in essence subsidizes education for single-family neighborhoods. Multifamily lowers single-family property values, I've heard this stated. Homes located in areas that do not include multifamily appreciated an average annual rate of 3.59%. This was over a 10-year period versus homes that do include multifamily, which appreciated an average rate of 3.9%, 6%. And that study was done again for 1997 and 1999, and the results were fairly similar. Multifamily brings crime. That's just not the case. Crime rates are not higher near multifamily developments than single-family. They tend to be more social because of the higher density, and they often have, almost always have private security versus most single-family neighborhoods that do not. And the other thing that I think that's been stated is only those with limited resources live in multifamily. The fact of the matter is many baby boomers and millennials are making the choice to live in higher-density housing with less maintenance, where they can walk to or be in close proximity to shopping, dining, and entertainment. This is a choice that's being made based on the demographics that we have. The other thing that I think it's important to consider is infrastructure costs, and I know that you've really looked at infrastructure needs, and we have significant infrastructure needs in Kennedale. When you look at the opportunity for multifamily in particular areas, like I said, it doesn't work everywhere, but in certain areas, and especially on arterial streets. This is an example of a comparison of the same infrastructure. So you have 24 single-family units versus 108 townhomes, 7.2 million investment in the single-family, and a 32.4 million investment, so you can, you know, that's about, almost five times the value, which means about five times the taxes, but it uses exactly the same infrastructure in terms of the roadways, water, sewer, and so forth. So who's living in multifamily? Mostly it's working professionals, millennials, they're not that young anymore, they're graduating from college or have graduated, they're 23 to 38 years old, the largest living population. So these are the folks that are going to live in this community, that are gonna lead this community. They're the largest living population, largest segment of the workforce, they're gonna be 75% of the workforce by 2020, and they're more educated than any other generation. So it's really important that we consider what that demographic is looking for when we look at housing, if we wanna have a sustainable community in terms of development. They're very career-focused, they're often waiting to build a family, which often translates to waiting to build, waiting to purchase a home as well. Prefer a mixed-use walkable area, whether they own or rent a home. Less interested in yards, and they're more interested in social spaces. So that walkability to social activity is important, and they spend more on retail, entertainment, recreation, and food services. So that's just kind of a quick overview of the market in relation to our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. All right, item number one is case PZ 1907. You can read up there where that is, I'm not gonna read it all out because it's very long. And so we'll start off with the staff presentation.
Oh, gosh, shocked me. So you want me to go through the case again?
Yeah. There's a lot of people that weren't here last time.
Okay, okay, so hopefully I've got the right one pulled out. This is on Bowman Springs, located at Bowman Springs in Corey Edwards. This is about a four-and-a-half acre site, so relatively small site fronting Bowman Springs. The adjacent uses are the Fellowship Academy here to the left, and of course the junior high school is directly behind. You have a residential development that's adjacent to the east. This is an arterial street. It is a challenging site to develop. There was, I think, some discussion of single-family initially, but it's a very challenging site to try and develop into single-family because of the way the lot is configured, because of drainage, because of easements that are there. So it is a challenging site to develop as it is currently zoned, which is R3. The surrounding zoning is a wide combination of zoning, including an urban village where the spiral gymnastics is. The Fellowship Academy is a PD, you have agricultural land, and R3. So the future land use map calls for residential use. It doesn't differentiate between the types of residential, it just is residential, it's very close to an orange, the orange nodule, which is urban village. It's basically right adjacent to what is proposed as urban village on the future land use plan. It meets the several principles in our comprehensive plan. One is connected city. You may recall that a few months ago that we passed new regulations on multifamily, which require all multifamily developments to be walkable communities. They have very high standards in terms of the way the site is laid out and the way it connects both within the community as well as to adjacent land uses. Economic prosperity, promoting access to a variety of housing options, and that's very important for all the reasons I've stated in the presentation earlier. Thriving community, development of different-scale centers, very important as we look at, as I said, different demographics and what people are looking for in different kinds of housing. Revenue, it does bring in, would bring in, 6 million in development approximately for about 24 units. Currently brings, has a tax value of 399.6, so annual property tax revenue about 43,000. KISD property tax revenue would be about 87,000 from the development. This is just a reminder that we do have, no matter who the developer is, we have pretty stringent requirements for plans that are submitted. Once the zoning case is approved, of course, they have to go through the plating process. All of these plans have to be signed off by a licensed engineer, architect, or professional that's in that particular profession. So it's pretty stringent, and no matter what, who the developer is, they have to meet all of these very stringent requirements, and they all have to be signed off by licensed And this, these were just some images, just to show you the new standards and the type of development that would have to go in to meet the current standards for multifamily for the townhomes that are proposed. And just finally, townhomes are, you may already know this, but they're individually platted and sold, just like homes, so they're really no different other than they're attached to another unit. Townhomes almost always have an HOA that maintains the grounds and the exterior of the buildings. So you're essentially prepaying into a fund to fund the exterior maintenance of the building. That's particularly the case when you have more than two units that are attached, which is what is proposed here, that an HOA would maintain all of that. And that's different than an HOA for single-family homes in that you're gonna pay quite a bit more per month for an HOA that's gonna maintain the exterior of the buildings. And property values are as high or higher than single-family. So just a couple of examples, this is in Monticello. That particular image is 200, that particular townhome in Monticello is $230 a foot, and then homes within a block are 195 and 213 a foot, just a couple of examples. So they do maintain their value. This is Roanoke, I think it's an interesting example because this is a community that's the same size as Kennedale. These are at 263 and 267 a foot for these townhomes versus homes within just a few blocks at 181, 180 a foot. And here, the property value's fairly close to the property we're looking at, approximately a third, 130 a foot, which is approximately what the developers are looking at. P&amp;Z did recommend approval with a 4-2 vote, and staff does recommend approval.
All right, let them call the developer to give a presentation. I know they're both here. If he, yep, come on up, give your name and address, please.
Thank you for allowing us to come and do the presentation. My name is Kair Naak. 3003 Russell Road, Arlington, Texas. So we're basically building traffic to homes on Bowman Springs and Kennedale Parkway. This is Traffic to Home LLC owned by family, my brother owns it. We live and work in this area, and we wanna develop a quality product that sustains our consumers experience. So I had built some hotels and house, single-family house in the area, and here's some example for that. This is my personal home that I built at 3003 Russell Home, Russell Road. Laidan Express in Forrester Hill, this is the land where it looks like when we bought the property. During the construction of the property, finished product, and the interior of the hotel. Comfort seat in South Carolina, that's where I'm originally from. This is the finished product and the interior of the hotel. Railier BBQ, this one I did also in South Carolina. And then I'll let my brother talk about the project we're gonna do right here.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, council members. So we're gonna be developing about two lots, two lots here in Kennedale, about four acre, which is P&amp;Z 1907, and then P&amp;Z 1908, that's about two-and-a-half acre. We're gonna have about 25 units on Bowman Springs, and on Potomac, we're gonna have about eight units. The outside is gonna look like this garage in the backs, and then all the bricks and stone works. So this is basic layout of the lots, gonna be, look like we're gonna have retention pond for the drainage, so that way we won't have any drainage issue. This is the retention ponds gonna be right here toward the Bowman Springs. So basically, yesterday we had a meeting with the neighbors, and they had a few questions regarding how the retention pond gonna look likes, because they wanna make sure there is no mosquito or any problem if the water retains, most likely, so we're gonna have fountain look like this one, or either, we haven't decided what it's gonna look like, but one of those, gonna be look like either that, so maintains the green, and that way there won't any holding water, staying water up there. Also for the privacy issues, we're gonna have brick walls, so that way there won't be any issue with the privacy, if someone has a concern with the privacy. And we believe in the quality, building quality townhomes, so our most, most of the, I mean, townhomes are, we're gonna be, go for somewhere between 130 to 150 square feet, and our average townhouse is gonna be between 1,800 to 2,200 square feet. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now we'll open the public hearing, or continue the public hearing, and Frank, did you say call you first? No, okay. Jared Reeves? I'll give your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Jared Reeves.
Oh, one more thing before we get started. We'll have a timer up there. Stick to our three minutes, 'cause we got a big, long line.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see it.
All right. I'm Jared Reeves, live at 1519 Diamond Creek. I'd like to say that I too have been to East Fort Worth, as many people here might have also, also in Forest Hill and other surrounding areas, and have seen apartments. I don't have the time to go around and take pictures of those, but I think you've all seen those as well. So we can just not just see the best, the best of the, the brightest opportunities there. Now, I have concerns a lot about our property values, one. I looked up a lot of research, and there's a lot of research out there, most of it's done by builders and companies that build apartments to reinforce that. I haven't seen a lot of independent studies where apartment, apartment houses, buildings increase the property values at all. I'm concerned about our schools as well. We have, I'm in education, and in every district I've been in, I mean, apartments bring, I mean, I don't know where those numbers come from that she's showing, they bring a lot of kids, and it's a, it's a struggle for schools to keep up with that capacity, and that's not just apartments, homes do the same thing. Our schools right now are pretty full. We have some repairs and upgrades that need to be done in some of our schools, and we're struggling to keep those up, and so I have concerns about that as well. And then, I also feel like we're getting kind of the cart ahead of the horse. We talk a lot about build the homes and then build the businesses, and homes tend to be built where businesses are, and if we can't manage our city well enough to draw in businesses, this is not the answer. If we can build some businesses in a way that can draw people into this area, then we have a better, a better route to go about something like this. Right now, I think it'll do nothing but drain the resources of our city, all the infrastructure. We have, our water department in the last year has been taken over by Arlington, we could not keep up with the infrastructure of that, you know? How are we gonna continue to do that? By bringing in so many more people, so much more traffic, and so many more needs to our community. We're gonna tap out our resources, have a very difficult time supporting the needs of our citizens here. Other areas I wanted to kinda ask about was that, did we have a, sorry, I'm looking here. Have we conducted any sort of housing need assessment? I think the need should drive the building of things like this. Have we conducted anything like that? That's one of my questions. I haven't done this before, so I don't know, do you ask them and get answers, or wait till the end and answer all of them, or?
Well, we'll have the staff come back and respond to questions. She's writing them down.
Okay, great, all right. And then have we spoke to Kennedale ISD, and what do they have to say about that, about this? That's the other area that I had concerns about. That's the other area that I had concerns about. What do they say about the capacity, potential for future building projects? Oh, sorry. Let me just ask my last two questions.
Okay.
How will this impact our community resources such as fire, police, parks, and rec? Has this been looked into? And is there any independent research to show the impact of residential home values after apartments being built nearby? So, and then do we have an impact fee for this as well? If we have these, that comes with that?
Okay. Where do you work?
I work for Arlington.
Oh, okay. Arlington ISD?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, the answer is going to be a lot of this. Yes, we do have a housing need study. Yes, we do have impact fees.
Okay.
Yeah, so a lot of the stuff that you're talking about, yeah, we've done a lot of those, but you need to remember that these people can come up and make a presentation. They have a right to ask for a rezoning and so just because they asked for rezoning doesn't mean they're going to get it or whatever, it's that they have that legal right. So we have no control over that. And just to give you a hint on the water, part of the water problem, as we know, is that we didn't have enough customers to, to make the, make the payments of what we needed for the infrastructure. So we turned it over to Arlington as a way to save money. It wasn't because either you're going to have skyrocketing water prices, which we did, or we're going to have to send it on out. So, but your other questions, I think Melissa will answer for you.
Do what now?
The other question's Melissa will answer.
Okay.
When she comes back up.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Carolyn Cox? And you live in Kennedale? You should come apply for a board.
Carolyn Cox, can you hear me?
Yeah, a little bit louder.
Carolyn Cox, yay. I live at ten thirty-one Winding Creek. So flooding is the nation's number one, the natural disaster. When asked how we, how they would mitigate the potential for flooding, they were unable to answer. So that's a big question for me. So neither the property owner or the general contractor was unable to provide those answers. The topography of the land slopes down toward the creek and toward our homes. And so, and additionally, the, there's grass and a lot of trees that help soak up the rain. So I also asked the property owner and the general contractor if they would raise the land, raise meaning R-A-I-Z-E, and they said they would not. And raise meaning to destroy the ground, to scrape out, to cut, to shave off, they wouldn't do that. The property is very elevated, like I said, so if they don't raise the land, raise the land, I went out there today and took pictures and if you stand there without raising the land, without any houses, it's level with the roofs of our homes. So if you, that shows you the difference of the love, the topography of how that rain is going to flow in. To, to her point, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Melissa.
Yes, Melissa, very nice lady. But I've been in several different areas and I understand the community type feel and the walkability and those, they are very popular these days, whether in Frisco, Addison, there's some in like Houston, in the Woodlands, and they're, they're all over the place. Where they're proposing off of Bowman Springs is not it. It's, it would not be a walkable area. The only place you would walk is right there in your own apartment complex because it's, the, the street is too busy. It's just, I agree that it's needed and it's more so in the area where we have businesses. We do have the millennials, which my kids are millennials, we do have the millennial-type people who like that kind of complex where there are a lot of places, cool places to eat, that sort of thing. Just for this particular area, it's just not suited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason Webb.
Hi, Jason Webb. I live at ten twenty-seven Winding Creek Drive, two doors down from where Carolyn lives. So first of all, thank you for taking the time to let me come up and kind of voice my opinion on the, the property. And I know that there's been a lot of back and forth between y'all and the community, so I appreciate the efforts and everything that you guys are doing because this is a big decision for, for Kennedale and in the direction that we want to go. So my wife and I, we bought our house and moved in six weeks ago. We live on Winding Creek Drive. Our back property, the back of our fence, is literally adjacent to the, the property that we're talking about today. So that kind of gives you an idea. Six weeks ago, we bought the house, we moved in. Three weeks later, we're kind of informed, hey, by the way, there's a potential rezoning for those four acres of land behind you. We were a little bit stunned, shocked and upset really isn't the word, but, but really kind of shocked by the potential there. So a lot of the problems that we have with this and the statistics and everything that were thrown out and everything's fine, but the property value is a big concern of ours. Obviously, just moving in, that's something that we don't want to, to tank our property values. And it doesn't matter what you say or the, the statistics that were thrown up there, you're not going to convince me that, that there's not going to be some kind of negative impact for our property taxes. And to Carolyn's point, the topography of this land is high enough to where, once you build a, a structure on this land and the structure that, that's set forth in our guidelines is fifty feet from the property line. And so the plan that the builder laid out yesterday was fifty feet from my back fence to the front of their building or to the front of the, the garage area. It's going to be a multiple, multiple story. So you add two, you know, two stories on top of a land that's already higher in elevation than my backyard, the multiple townhomes are going to be looking directly into my backyard. So that raises a lot of privacy and security concerns as well. So, you know, it's great they're going to have a fence, but that fence, you know, doesn't really do anything whenever you're sitting, you know, twenty feet in the air looking directly into my backyard. So there's, there's that. And Carolyn mentioned there's, you know, the, the drainage issues. So the one nice thing about the, you know, us moving in and this coming up is I've been able to talk to a lot of the neighbors and a lot of the community. And one of their biggest concerns was the, the drainage issues. So in a substantial rain, some of the, the properties in our neighborhood, the backyards tend to flood, and that's something that's going to have to be addressed and something that's going to be a major concern. And there was already comment made earlier about this property not being suitable for residential because of the drainage issues. And I'm not sure that adding a multifamily home is going to have any kind of decent impact on that at all. So I'm out of time. I'll stop talking. I have a lot more to say, but thank you for your time again.
All right, thank you. I, I will point out that the school district and the city has teamed up to do a drainage study to address that problem that you were talking about. Roy Banning.
I have not seen Roy since we built the vineyards. My name is Roy Banning. I live at ten twenty Kennedale Sublet Road. I'm here to talk to you about winning versus losing. For all the students that participate in UIL extracurricular activities, I'm really here more as a parent than anything else. You might think that what you do with these townhouses and apartments, it'll have a, it'll have a great deal of impact on our students. I don't know if any of y'all, you council members have kids in the school district, currently have kids in the school district or will have kids in the future, but I believe that more kids involved in extracurricular activities, whether it's sports, band, or fine arts, the more kids you have that aren't getting into trouble. And it will help them once they graduate from high school in their everyday lives as well. So let's talk about losing versus winning. Last week, I was going to say, is anybody happy with the Cowboys losing their last three games? Hey, they won, so now everybody's happy again. Currently, in the last UIL realignment, we were a little over a hundred kids from being placed in five A versus staying in four A. We have been one of the largest schools in four A for at least the last fifteen years and that is greatly to our advantage. We have been successful in almost all sports, won state championships, won band contests, and won act play contests. In fact, won act play, won area this, this past year for like the first time in ten years. Why have we won so much? It is because we have an advantage over the smaller schools in four A. A lot of those are half the size that we are. But if we move up to five A, we will be in the smallest school category again. We will be playing schools twice our size, like right now Dallas Highland Park or any of the six Frisco schools. You see, the Frisco school district keeps building high schools to keep all of their schools in five A. They don't want to move up to six A for the same reason that I don't want to move up to five A. When you're a little kid on the block, I guarantee we will not be able to be as successful across the board in sports, band, or fine arts. And yes, band and fine arts, they compete at the four A level now too, not five A. And back to winning or losing, students will not, will no longer want to participate once we start losing, which means less students benefiting from those extracurricular activities, which we, which we will be, which we have had in our community. They will have more free time on their hands to get into trouble. And you could blame the losing on the coaches, but it would be your fault that we are the smallest five A school, not the coaches. The coaches don't control the size of the school, but you do. To put this in perspective, when you ran for your elected positions in our small community, you could almost run a campaign by yourself. And if you can convince four to five hundred people to go vote for you, you can win. Plus, as an example, I've known Linda Rose for literally thirty years because our kids played sports together. But now, both of, if you put both of us in Arlington or Mansfield, we, we may have known each other for that, that was many years, but what do you think the chances of winning in those much larger cities would have been for city council? You, all of you would be at a great disadvantage trying to win city council seats in those cities. If you vote for all these zoning changes, you will be putting our students in the same disadvantage as you would be if you had run for city council in Arlington or Mansfield. If you let all these townhomes and apartments be built in our small community, your changes the dynamics of how our kids will have to compete and it is, will be bad for our students and our community. Please let our students continue to be successful. Don't set them up for failure.
Thank you, Roy. And last, Frank Fernandez. Frank, three minutes.
My name is Frank Fernandez and I live in Kennedale. I wanted to just bring up a couple of things. On the future land use plan that was developed in twenty-twelve, I don't remember any of you being sitting on that, but I did sit on that, on those, I was in that committee and I was at all the meetings during that committee. And one of the things that had come up, no one ever said, we want more apartments and more duplexes. Okay, everybody said, we want a small-town feeling and we want low density. Okay, we want walkways and we want accessibility. Okay? Now, so I'm going to bring that up. The second thing is comparing Kennedale to Magnolia that was placed right on that board, you gotta be kidding me. I mean, I just went to the Magnolia Festival, started on Eighth Street and went all the way down to Main Street, okay? Wall to wall, okay? A lot of those apartments that are there are basically used by doctors, nurses, and people that live within the hospital. And most of those things are eateries, okay? Not anything, and very small boutiques, but most of them are eateries that are sitting on that particular, particular area. Also, I heard this thing about millennials, okay? I divide millennials into three groups. The first group is they get out and they want to go live in an apartment. Absolutely right, in an apartment in downtown. Fort Worth, Dallas, Chicago, New York, whatever you tell them. Then they figure it out, oh, or you get the second group. You get a second group that decide to come over and buy homes like in Crestview. And they go in there and they buy the house, they tear the heck out of it inside and they build it brand-new inside, keeping all the accoutrements outside to make it look like the home that they kind of, their grandparents lived in. That was the second group. And the third group does what a lot of them are doing. They come back, they move in with their parents because they don't want to pay rent, they don't want to pay food, and they just basically are hoping that their grandparent pass away so they can get a free home out of the deal. Okay, that's basically what I got. I got fifty seconds. I may be able to run this one. If not, I got another two shots. The P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z comes in and you're absolutely right. If a person comes in and apply to have a zoning done, that person has the right to do it. Now, the P&amp;Z person must tell them, this does not look like something the council will go with or not go with. Now, at that time, the person says, I still want to go before council, okay? And they have the right. They fill out their paper, they pay whatever, two, three hundred dollars, I don't know how much it is now, but whatever the amount is, then they come before council. And when the presentation is made by the city, the city at that time gets to say, this is recommended by the city or not recommended by the city. I'm going to stop at this time and I'll, I'll come back. I know, I don't want to take another second.
Yeah, we'll see the sequel. Thank you. Well, that'll bring up Melissa for staff response and I'm going to close that public hearing.
Well, just a couple of, I guess, answers to the questions. There was a question about the impact on infrastructure and I think I covered that earlier. It's actually a significant positive impact on infrastructure because multifamily is higher density, so it brings in a lot more tax dollars and uses a lot less infrastructure than single-family homes. All projects have to be, meet the I-SWIM requirements, which is the Integrated Stormwater Management System, which deals with drainage. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how that works, but we have engineers that look at those plans. They are very stringent, have to meet all the requirements. So whether it's multifamily or single-family, they all have to meet those requirements, including this development. So that addresses that drainage problem that is currently a problem because there is no drainage plan for the current site because it's just vacant land. So this will actually improve the drainage for that area because there will actually be a drainage plan. In terms of height, it's zoned R3 currently, so you can have a two-story house today, which is no different than the two-story that's planned for the townhomes. So it is a higher elevation, but that's just the elevation of the land and there's not much that can be done about that. So whether it's R3 use, which is what is currently zoned, or whether it's multifamily, two-story is going to be two-story. And just a note that all developments actually have to be walkable now. We all, we require sidewalks for all developments and our hope is that, that walkability eventually does connect. So as we look at this development, it has to be walkable within it. And, you know, the hope is that there will be sidewalks and I'm actually not sure how much sidewalks are on Bowman Springs and will connect to Kennedale Parkway, which ultimately will have development, restaurants, retail that people want to go to, which is just a couple of blocks away.
All right, now I'll bring up the developer for any last comments. So you guys, any more comments? No? Okay, thank you. All right, then I'll entertain a motion for PZ nineteen oh seven.
I'd like to make a motion to deny ordinance number six eighty and to leave the zoning as current R3.
I have a second. Further discussion? Anybody? All right, well then, please enter your vote. Motion fails. All right.
Mayor, can we get a clarification on this voting?
Yeah.
Because I may have pressed the wrong.
She was making a, making a motion to deny the rezoning. Is everybody okay with their vote?
So to deny it, then I would?
Yeah, she made a motion to deny, so then the motion is denied. Why is it saying failed? Wait.
So I make a motion to deny.
Chad, you voted to deny?
Yes.
All right, Linda, you voted to deny? And Chris, you voted to deny?
I'm in support of my own motion too, so something is not right.
Yeah, so I think the actual vote, Sandra, are you voting against the motion?
Yes.
All right, so the actual, the, the actual motion should have passed four to one against the rezoning.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I think maybe the, the way we worded it, it didn't come out as well as we thought it would. Yeah. So the, the motion to rezone has been, or the petition to rezone has been denied?
Four to one.
Four to one. Sandra? All right, that brings us to case PZ one nine zero eight. All right, that brings us to case PZ 1908.
So the address for this is 801 Potomac. This is located on Little School Road. Hold on just a second. So here's the site. Adjacent uses are a self-storage facility and a church. There's also a neighborhood retail, and then you have Arlington neighborhoods adjacent to the east and west. The zoning is currently C1, and it makes sense to have this kind of transitional use. This would be townhomes, which is what's being proposed for multifamily. It's, it makes sense for this commercial use to transition to the residential areas to the east and the west, and is located on a major arterial road, Little School Road. It is, in the future land use plan is residential and has the same principles as the last one, or meets those same principles. It's a $2.5 million development, so about $18,000 to the city in taxes and $36,000 to the KISD. Staff does recommend approval. P&amp;Z recommended approval at a 4-2 vote.
All right, the developer, you guys, come up and speak.
We have same concept as the previous case. And so we're going to be developing about eight townhouses in this particular lot.
All right.
Everything is going to remain the same.
All right, thank you. Brent Heatherly.
Counselor, thank you for your time tonight. We have a major concern. I'm Brent Heatherly. I represent Georgetown Commons Homeowners Association. We have 66 homes, and we are just west and north of Potomac and North Little School Road. We've got a really horrendous problem in the mornings with people getting on North Little School Road off of Potomac. And we're just 62 of the many, many homes just west of us. And I just can't imagine this 2.5 acres of land that's going to be developed supposedly in townhouses and multi-home units. That's going to be a huge amount of traffic, mostly going north. But if we don't have stoplights at Potomac and Little Road, and also a stoplight, I would say with all these people that are going to have homes, getting, trying to get to work in the morning, coming home in the evening, we need a stoplight. It's that location, too. We need to at least consider that. And from, going from commercial to multifamily seems like something that ought to be reconsidered quite notably. We have a law firm right there at Potomac, and Little School Road has been a great neighbor to us. We've got lots of land now that would open up. It could be, who knows, washeteries or a lot of things. But to just keep adding and adding and adding townhouses and apartments and things like that, I just, I do not believe it's a, is a good move. We have apartments on our north side, and it's one of the highest crime rates right now in Arlington. It's a tremendous problem. The other thing I might notice, or say, is flooding. All these buildings that are going in, the townhouses and all that, that's being considered, is going to be higher than our homes. We've already got a potential flood problem. Everybody's talked tonight. It seems like over half the people are talking about floodplains and building that's going on that's causing flooding. And this needs to be considered also. So my recommendation, our 66 homeowners, I would recommend that we stay with the commercial. So that's everything I've got to say.
All right, well, the couple of things I'll add is that your road is in Arlington. That part of the, yeah, and we've been trying to get Arlington to address that issue of that road that's on Little Road. That's the Arlington Road.
Okay, how do we resolve that?
Well, I think we need to, you need to get in touch with your Arlington councilperson because we know that there's a problem there, especially at Pennsylvania and Little Road. But that's, again, in Arlington Road, and we can't do anything in there until they're willing to do something. So they're going to have to come in and do a traffic study to see what the kind of the accidents are there. But I would get ahold of whoever's your representative in that part of Arlington to see if they can start working on that road. And so that would be a step I would take.
Okay. It's kind of confusing when this is a Kennedale issue.
Yeah, I know.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, it is confusing.
And we've got an issue right now, and it'd be compounded on top of that.
Yeah, and I'll say this about drainage. I've been doing this for 22 years. First day I got on this board, P&amp;Z, drainage was a problem. You know, and Arlington's had that problem. They bought out, what's it, Johnson Creek? Probably because there's a drainage problem, no doubt about it. You're absolutely right about that.
Yes, sir. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you ever moved to Kennedale? You should apply for a board. I'm always trying to get people to apply for boards. Margot Jordan.
Okay, I have it on here. I can't show it up here.
We'll figure out the time. Do you need something up there?
The picture, if I may. I'm a little visual.
Do we have it?
It's easy, okay, thank you.
Is that what you want? Yeah, and then I'll just track your time by here, and I'll sort of signal you.
The church is toward me. They have a retention wall that they paid money for, for the drainage on their property. This 2.5 acres can either ask the church, buy from the church, go right away to connect in to. I don't think that exists, no. You've got the city of Arlington, of Little Road, and if you go down to Potomac, you're on Arlington water. No plans have been finalized where a retention area, which must be on that 2.5 acres, that has not been addressed, nor has it been applied for or approved. So I want to know how we're going to build on 2.5 acres. That drainage and that retention is most expensive is number one issue. Second thing, we were asking, where might you face? Little Road, Potomac Parkway. The answer was, we don't know yet. Then they said, well, maybe Little Road. Well, in that case, everything to the back is going to back up to the homes. You'll see all these homes back on the left. I'm vice president of Homeowners Association for Georgetown and Park. That's 187 individual homes. Georgetown Commons is just to the right of it. Everything on Little Road to the left of this road, those are all single-family homes. They have the wall there. You have the attorney's office. You have a stretch of land that leads up to one of the apartment area. They're now going to build a village, they, Arlington Road, of apartments. You go past there, and you already have Walmart. So there's not going to be any more retail coming in here. We're, we're maxed out. So 2.5 acres, some years ago, I think now, that same piece of property was for family dwelling. Turned it to business, now it will go back to multifamily. Don't care what it is that's on it. That issue of that drainage has got to be addressed.
Okay, thank you very much. Danielle Van Beest.
Hi, Danielle Van Beest, 6500 Virginia Square. I was here last week, so I'll just kind of say the same thing. The property is up against my home's fence. So again, it is single-family residential currently, where all the Georgetown homes are. You expect a home to maybe be built next to you. You don't expect to have eight families looking into your backyard. I do feel like it's a safety issue, a privacy issue. And so I did just want to say that I ask you to oppose this.
Now, so remember, you owned the property, right? Your family owned it?
I lived, I lived there with my parents.
Yeah, and then your dad sold it?
Oh, yes, so the, yes, the current property we did previously own.
And what was your plans for selling it? Do you remember? I can't remember, it was a long time ago.
Sometimes you can't hold on to all the property you own.
Okay, all right.
You know, why do you sell a house?
Yeah, good point. All right, well, thank you very much. Roy Baney.
Roy Baney, 1020 Kennedale Sublet Road. So I guess I'm asking, what advantage are adding these townhomes and apartments do for us? I know in your agenda packets, the city staff put in there, in all three cases, there's a great demand for either townhomes or apartments. If I understand things correctly, we've already kind of met that demand. We've rezoned approximately 12 acres next to Burger Box to Urban Village, which, and Urban Village is essentially a fancy description of townhomes. We have changed 11 acres on Little School Road to Urban Village. We've also changed an additional 2 acres of land across the street from my house, but as Neighborhood Village. Plus, we're, the new subdivision, Magnolia, at the end of Wildcat Way is going to have R3-size homes in it, which used to be the smallest home allowed, but then y'all went and added R4 zoning, which are the same-sized houses, but closer together, so even smaller homes and more. So right at this point, we've committed to 25 acres to try to meet that demand. And so, but now we're trying to add, well, I guess since the first one failed, 13.5 acres more to meet that demand. Shouldn't we probably wait until we get some of these 25 acres developed and see how much demand there really is in this area? I mean, I can see would, if they fill up right away, well, yeah, then maybe we need the additional acreage. But if they take years to fill up, maybe we've already met that demand. The other thing is, you may be aware of this, you may not, but once you change this to multifamily, it's probably no going back. And even if the developer fails, can't get the financing, it's still multifamily for another person to come in there and do it. That's what happened with the vineyards. We tried, they wanted R3 initially. We fought it, we won. We fought it again, we won. The third time, it changed to R2, but then the landowner and the developer couldn't agree on a price, so it sat vacant for five years. But it was still R2, when it never got changed to any, to bigger homes. Anyways, I guess my point is, when do you, when do you stop doing townhouses and apartments? I guess, to me, what we're trying to do, it looks like we're, or the city staff is trying to do, is we're trying to swap quantity for quality. Instead of having more tax dollars coming into our city per family, we're suddenly want more people for less tax dollars per family. And one of the fallacies, well, I won't do that now. One of the fallacies, what she's put up there, was number of students per 100 units. You shouldn't look at it that way. You need to look at it number of students per acre because that's more realistic of what you're actually getting.
Okay, thank you, Wayne, Roy. All right, next up, Dave Cooksey.
I live at 3105 Sunny Meadows in Delaware, in Gardens. I'm a deacon at the Old School Baptist Church, just adjoining this property to the south. And we want to be good neighbors, and we're, we're not as a, as a group against this or in favor of it. However, we have some general concerns that maybe would all be for platting, but we do have, I think, a general concern just for y'all to think about, and that would be security. And of course, the drainage issue is huge. We see it somewhat problematic. We do have a drainage retention pond that we were required to put in on our lot. But we're really concerned about security in the area, and particularly with the apartments that are going on into the north. I think that would be a concern for us, too, to have some more in there. But again, we're not totally against this, we're not totally for it. We just feel it's a little premature, and there's not enough information for us to do that. But we appreciate the efforts here, that y'all are considering this, and we look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you very much. It's a very nice church you guys built over there. Frank Fernandez. You could have said it the front, Frank. Could have said it the front.
I need to sit closer next time. My name is Frank Fernandez, and I live in Kennedale, Texas. I wanted to go back to, you know, the first part of when they were showing the retaining or detaining, or whatever they want to call it, pond. That's a great picture of it. If you want to see one alive, go to Brookstone, and you look right there to the right, and you're going to see one. And ask people how they feel about it, you know, the way that particular pond looks. Okay, just talk to anybody around there. You know, before the city continued to take these, these things, you know, whether they, they accept it, or, you know, an application, this, you know, when they're going to come for real before the P&amp;Z, they're going to have to have a site plan. I mean, right now, people are just putting pictures that, you know, that, it doesn't make sense to me. It looks like something a fifth-rated color, you know, with pink and green buildings and yellow building, and put little peaks on the top. I really think they need a site plan so they can have a better excuse. And I know that a couple of P&amp;Z chairmans before, they were asking for that. And then things went haywire, and that was the end of that discussion. By the way, when you start, when the city start looking at, at the buildings as a money generator, that's not the job of the city. Okay, the job of the city is to give a better type of life to the people that live there. I mean, it is obvious that if you put 110 apartments in 2 square acres, it's going to be great. But what is it going to do to the living of the people that live around you? You know, that, that's not a very good excuse. Like I said, the city needs to generate money by bringing in business, not by basically, you know, worsening the, the type of living that they, that we have already in Kennedale. That Harvard studies, a study citing, the very good, smart people of Harvard. Boy, they got a lot of brains up there. But the truth of the matter is that, yeah, we see what they've given us. The truth of the matter is that, where was that study done? I mean, were they taking these things out of the New York area, the Chicago area? The what area were they saying that less people in apartment have kids? I mean, I can take you by the hand, and I can take you to the Shady Creeks or the Steepo Chays and show you how many homes they have over there that actually have kids living on it. And I know, I won't speak for the other two, but on the Shady Creek East, there is 75 homes. I don't think there is five homes that have kids in the school district. All the other ones pay taxes, but they don't have kids in this, you know, so that's a great, you know, great thing for the city. Again, I don't know where that study was done, but it needs to be addressed. By the way, the same study out of Dallas says that one of the reasons that big corporations are having problem in Dallas moving in is because they don't have enough large homes to give to the executives. And that's more local. Okay, that's a local study, and that was done, I believe, it was on Channel 8. I will say the other ones for... I will save the other ones for, the third one.
Yeah, for the trilogy.
For the trilogy.
All right. So, oh, and Frank, just to give, Frank? Frank?
Yes.
Brookstone has a detention pond. That's a little bit different than a retention pond. I know it's hard to remember. Detention ponds detain.
This one is a C-2.
Okay, because a detention pond detains water and lets it go. A retention pond holds the water. So you have retention ponds and vineyards, but a detention pond in...
You're right. I'm not, I'm not...
Okay, thanks. You're a PNZ guy, you know that. All right, so we'll close the public hearing and bring up Melissa for her staff response.
So, a lot of the questions that are being asked, those are answered in the plating and building permit process. That long list that I showed you earlier, those plans will, of course, incorporate all of the drainage plans and all the other required plans. We do have very stringent requirements, as I said earlier, with what we call SWIP for drainage. This particular site, just now being quite familiar with Little School Road and working with Arlington on the other project, they're going to be tapping into the stormwater system for drainage. So that's how that's going to work. They're going to have an area where it's going to drain into, directly into the stormwater system, because I'm, become quite familiar with this area. So, whereas there is no drainage plan today, that area, that whole site will drain into the stormwater system for Arlington. The site, I think it was mentioned about which way the houses would orient, the site will have to have access from both Potomac and Little School Road. We do require two access points, so they'll have to access from both of those. And the only other point I had, it's been mentioned quite a bit, about the need to bring in business. Business follows rooftops. So, we'll bring in business when more rooftops come. Thank you.
All right, the developer, do you have anything else to say? All right, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion on case PNZ 1908.
I make a motion to deny ordinance number 681 and to let the zoning remain as C1 zoning.
Do I have a second? I second. All right, any further discussion? Suspense is killing me. Is it you? That's what happens when you miss a meeting. That's what happens when you miss a meeting. You forget all this voting stuff. You're voting a yes if you're approving of the motion to deny. Yeah, it's, okay, motion passes 3-2. All right, there we go. All right, so that brings us, so the zoning is denied, in case you're wondering. That brings us to the last one. PNZ case 1909, which I'm not going to read, because it's like 60 million words. What's that? The motion passed by, the motion was to deny the rezoning, so the motion passed. Okay, so, staff report.
Okay, this development is at Kennedale Sublet, across from the Krogers. I imagine you're all familiar with the site. Across the street is, and to the east and to the, to the north, are significant retail development that's gone in, including the Kroger and Starbucks and so forth, Chick-fil-A. And then there's additional development going in directly across the street that's under construction now, and LA Fitness, and a restaurant, and auto service, a vet. So this is what has made this development possible in terms of the retail that was recently approved for C2 zoning in front of it, and then the development that's proposed is directly behind that retail on the site. So this is the four pad sites that they're looking at for retail, and then the residential is proposed on the back to be apartments, and I'll let the developer talk more about what they're looking at for that. It's currently zoned R3. Surrounding zoning is R3, and commercial zoning that is in Arlington. The future land use map calls for this to be an urban village, which is a combination, a mix of uses in a walkable format. The multifamily that's proposed would have to be in that same walkable format. So we believe the combination of multifamily and commercial meets that requirement, meets the same principles as the one I mentioned, ones I mentioned earlier, with a connected city, economic prosperity, thriving community with development in different scale centers. This is a $40 million development approximately for the apartment development. Currently, that property is at $365,000 value under TAD. So it brings about $290,000 annually to the city, about $580,000 to the KISD. Staff does recommend approval. PNZ recommends approval with a 4-2 vote.
Here's the developer here. Yeah, would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening, City Council, citizens of Kennedale. My name is Jim Maybach. I'm with Paco Southwest Realty, 1703 North Paco Drive, Arlington, Texas. We've been in commercial real estate business for 47 years. I've been at the company 36 years. I've had the pleasure of working with Vicaro Ventures on this property. They're the potential buyer. That includes the retail that we zoned two months ago on the front of the property, and now we're seeking the multifamily on the rear of the property. I want to point out that there's a lot of things that we've done with this property that, that we've been able to make a better community and also fix some issues that have been riding with this property for many years, from the homeowners to the west of us, the Steeplechase subdivision. We've met with them, we had a community meeting, we reached out to them, they had a lot of questions, we had a lot of things answered. We feel like we've been a good neighbor to them in this development. And it's important that your comprehensive plan says this is a urban village area that was approved in 2012, and that's what we followed when we came in here seeking this development of the entire site. The Koker family has been on that property for approximately 80 years. I'm the broker that represents them, and have also been asked to assist the developer out of Fort Worth. They have a lot of experience, they're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation on this property. And a few of the amenities I want to point out that are very important to this development that I think you need to consider seriously is, number one, the accesses to Joplin. We're not infiltrating their neighborhood. The access is going to go in and out of Joplin. You're going to get your half of the city, Joplin Road, built. The other half is being built, has been built by All Storage, and I was, had the pleasure of doing that zoning case in Arlington, Texas, for that company. That's a heavy, not a heavy commercial use. It's a commercial use, and it's light. There's very few traffic generation from that, but it is a commercial use. And this location is a transitional zoning, residential transitional zoning to the nice development at Steeplechase. We've been very considerate of them, and we've created detention and retention areas on their side to stop the drainage and take it around and create a large buffer, so that we're not in their backyards, and they're not looking down in their backyards. And we've got screening fences, and we have trees we're adding. So we're making, these are the things that are required by the new apartment zoning that you all passed here recently and worked very hard on. I attended the meetings in 2012 on behalf of the Koker family, because they were getting ready to finally sell this piece of property. And I will remind you also, the Koker family is the one, people that sold the residential subdivision of Steeplechase to a developer that put homes in there. So this is a good transitional mixed-use zoning that is appropriate at this location. We've come forward with retail zoning in the front. Businesses, we're bringing sales tax dollars, and now we're creating walkability. And on top of that, we're creating jobs in Kennedale on those retail. They need places to live. We're 1,100 yards, or feet, I'm not sure which one it was, but I think it's feet, 1,100 feet from the intersection of 287 and Sublet. That's where people are going to get on and off the highway to go to work each day. Most likely, they're not coming the other way. They may, they may be, have businesses in Kennedale, which would be nice. There's going to be affordable living there. These are market-rate apartments, so there's no tax incentives, there's no deal being cut. It's, they're paying market rate for the property, and they'll pay, they'll build a market-rate leasing facility, and a quality, very much a quality development. This meets all those standards. Again, it's facing Joplin, it's going to improve drainage. Arlington's going to improve Sublet Road. Those plans are part of the presentation. And you'll see where, where they're going to build that bridge over the creek that comes out of Steeplechase. When they build that bridge, they'll widen that area underneath, and that drainage will flow better as well. That's, I think they mentioned the drainage of that creek at one point, when we met with them in the community meetings. So with that, I was the developer and broker that helped bring Kroger to that site. I worked on that for five years. Took five years to get that site approved. We had to move an off-ramp with Tech dot. But that has bring, brought a renewed resurgence to that area for retail and for people that want to live in that area and have those facilities and those services available to them. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the rest of the team, and they have a detailed PowerPoint for you. Thank you.
Good evening. Patrick Pine, 3501 Autumn Drive in Fort Worth. Let me get this open real quick. Could you please put the presentation on? So like Jim mentioned, the locations at Sublet and Joplin Road in the city of Kennedale. If you look to the bottom right corner, these apartments were built in the city of Arlington that feed into Kennedale schools, but this would really be the first multifamily complex inside the Kennedale city limits of a good size. Area improvement, so if you look, there's existing retail, there's the Kroger, self-storage just went in, just to the east of the site, and then we're providing retail in the front. And then there's retail under construction, as I'm sure you all know, that is on the north side of Sublet from our site. There's a $13 million Sublet Road widening project that will build a new bridge and provide some traffic relief in the area. And our site, if you look down here, faces into Joplin, so the traffic comes out to the signal light, and then there's another signal light. So it basically shares the same signal light with the retail across the street. This is a, these are pictures of the widening, and our engineers here to answer any questions that you may have there. This is the site drainage. The image on the left is current, so it's a, it's a hill, basically, that is, the water flows down on every side. In our neighborhood meeting with the community, that was one of their biggest concerns, is how do we take care of the issue of ponding in our backyards? And really, it takes a development of this size to be able to correct that problem long term for all the residents in this Steeplechase development. So left is current, the water flows in all directions and comes off the hill, and then our, we have our engineer here as well that can explain more, but basically, we've created a detention area that is a dry area that collects, collects water during heavy rains, and then we pipe it out, and it attaches to the stormwater system of the city. These are images of detention designs, either a park setting, natural setting, or kind of a hybrid landscape park setting. They can be really nice areas. So in our concept design, we met with architects and engineers, we really wanted to be respectful to our neighbors, eliminate the drainage issues, create a sense of place, promote urban design elements, just like are in the new multifamily code, and provide green space, landscape spaces, and also connect to the current and future retail. Because really, you know, this site is in such a great location that you have retail across the street. You have Starbucks, you have restaurants. So, a really well-thought-out development will activate that area, and people will come home from work, and they'll park their car, and they'll go walk across the street, they'll go work out, they'll go eat, and really create a sense of community. And these will be residents of the city of Kennedale. So old multifamily design on the left here, these are two-story, you can see the parking from the street. To the right is a property that I developed in Scottsdale, Arizona, and it's very inward-facing and is a boutique apartment complex, and it did very well. Beautiful property. Old multifamily design on the inside, really screams, you know, what I used to think, before I got into apartment development, what I thought of as apartments in my grandmother's condo, you know? It was a lot different than it is today. It really feels like a home inside, and it's a really, really nice place for people to live. So some additional features of this development would be enhanced landscaping and maintaining privacy. And I, we had a study conducted that I'll show in a bit, but we're, this is just an example of a typical fence that would go in. Smart lighting design, so that we don't have any leakage off of our site, and the light is contained on our site. So we've really tried to think through all the scenarios. Here are some different fencing options that I'm sure would address privacy concerns that really provide a good barrier. So here's the concept site plan here, and as you can tell, the buildings are massed on Joplin with a, with an entrance and going to the leasing area, full amenity. It's just a Class A development with, with really nice amenities, landscaped courtyards, and we've been respectful here to the neighbors and set back the building over here with the detention area on the top left corner, looking at 142 feet to a two-story building. So instead of continuing a three-story building to the edge, we dropped it down to two-story to maintain privacy, and it's, and also 142 feet with the placement of the detention area, and then to the third-story portion of the building, 240 feet as well. And then up here in the top right corner, there's a 65 feet separation from two-story versus the residential. There's some natural grade there, it's about six to eight feet, and we're going to have a fence on top of that. And so if you were standing in that backyard, this is, this is the, the bottom image here on this site section is as if you're looking down the northern, or the, this is the western portion of the site up here. So if you're standing right here and looking back towards the north, that's the bottom image here. And so, the line of sight study shows that if you're, if you're in this backyard, basically, you can't see anything outside of that backyard. The fence is there, there's a landscape buffer, there's already a natural landscape buffer as well. But we will place trees where we need to, to add more, more privacy. But really, this is kind of, kind of telling here that by giving good direction to our architects and engineers, we were able to set it back and provide a solution. The, the top image is as if you're facing on this, oh man, there we go. See where my mouse pointer is? Basically, if you're looking from down here, back up to the west, it's, there's a detention area that we will actually, if you look at the natural grade line that's right here, we're actually going to have to berm it here in order to fix the drainage issues. So the water will flow down, collect, and then be piped out. But by providing that, that... But by providing that, that retaining wall and with the fence on top, it allows us to maintain the privacy of all these homes over here that, in the, the top left corner. So there will be a six foot plus six feet and so there will be no way to see into that yard. These are some concept elevations from BGO Architects and really, these are some of their latest projects and, and they are fantastic architects, they do a great job, very urban looking and also very timeless, you know? These are, these are great designs and they all have nine-foot-plus ceilings and great landscaping and have institutional operators that maintain them long-term. These are all properties that I have worked on personally. I've developed all of these and, and won some awards over the years. The one in the top left was Arizona Apartment Association. It was the, came in second place unfortunately, but we were up against a lot of competition there. The one on the right, that's Jefferson Chandler, great apartment community. On the left side here, this apartment won Best New Construction Multifamily in the State of California and it was a beautiful project. And then on the bottom, this property here, won Best New Design by the National Associate, Association of Interior Designers. So, I mean, we really have a lot of good projects under our belt. This is going to bring high-quality market rate development to the area and really put Kennedale in that, the intersection right there with all the retail and have, have a stake to it and have people that walk over there and, and, and love where they live. So, thank you so much.
If you have any questions, we have our engineer here.
I was just going to speak on, or answer questions on drainage if there were any concerns.
Well, we'll wait to see if we get anything from the public and you'll come back up and answer those drainage questions. All right. So open the public hearing. I said, Sarah, you said you didn't want to speak, but you're in opposition. Have you changed your mind? Do you want to speak?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea that we do have some affordable housing, but I'd like to see housing, not apartments. And that, we have one little business that's going to be in front of that property that's in Kennedale. But if, if we take the business there, those people live in Kennedale, but the business is Arlington, and I understand that Kennedale School District gets money off of it, but the city doesn't when it's business, because that's in Arlington. If we're going to do that, then we need to try to buy the other land that way on both sides, if it's in Kennedale, and develop that with business also, because we're losing businesses right and left and that's not good. We've got to have a balance. You've got to have business and that. And it, just putting people in there is not going to bring business. Y'all got to go out and talk to those business people, that good business people that, with names and try to get them here. Say, hey, we are trying to do something good here for Kennedale. I understand we're going to grow, let's grow in the right way. We've got to have business or otherwise Arlington's going to take over us and I don't want that to happen. Kennedale's been here since the 1800s. I grew up here, I was born in Mansfield, but I grew up in Kennedale and I love this little town and I know we're going to grow, but we've got to have business alongside the, you can't just expect the property owners to take the big responsibility of running the city. The business has got to help and you can't be running off a long-time business that's like Fab, what is it, Fab Creek? They've been here forever, since I was little. We don't want to lose them. We don't. So you need to work with them. We're losing good businesses that have been here forever and that's ridiculous, because they're, they're the backbone that helped us stay Kennedale, that we didn't get, in the early 70s, there was a talk about annexing this to Arlington then. And my dad stood up and said, no, we're not going to do that. We're a town. We can do this, we work together. We did fundraisers, community fundraisers. We did what we had to do to get an ambulance, we put a check box on the water bill and everybody donated a dollar, two dollars, whatever they could do alongside their water bill to, to do stuff, to get an ambulance, to improve our fire department before we got grants or whatever. But you just can't expect to keep cramming people in here and not develop the business as you're doing this, because it's not going to work. You've got to have business along with, along with developing homes.
Oh, I'll point out, we are doing some work with Speed Fab Creek, the city in Speed Fab, we're doing some joint projects together.
Yeah, I don't want to lose them.
No, I don't either. And they've been a great corporate partner.
Yes, they have. They build our, which is the junior high now?
Yeah, they build the junior high, yeah.
That was our, our first real high school.
I remember.
Our high school was up here and I was in that school and you had two lanes of students this way and two lanes coming.
I visited that school recruiting people for our honors program. And of course, you do know on the Coker property, there is four or five lots for commercial.
Right. But we need to validate where they want to come to us, not to keep going to Arlington.
Yeah, I agree.
That's the whole problem.
Yeah, that is a problem.
That's my only problem with that being there is because Arlington's going to get the business more.
Yeah.
That's not good.
That's true. Thank you. Marty Claire? Marty Claire? Marty Claire? Did I get that right? Is it McCartney Claire? Oh, well, you got it backwards now. Sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Claire McCartney from Fern Court in Kennedale, 1404 Fern Court. And I don't think one little old lady can stop a speeding train, so I don't know what to do. I really don't. I, I would prefer that we still would live at the bottom of the Coker property and see the cows and the bales of hay and enjoy our beautiful tree views and it doesn't look like that would be the case at this point in time. I wish the Kokers had not sold the property below for development. And we are at the bottom of a sheer drop-off like a cliff. I gave y'all some pictures up there and I wondered if any of you had looked at them. Well, the, the property, the Coker property comes up to the second story of the two-story homes and the rooftops of the homes on Mallard and Fern Court and extends down into Derby and part of Coker, Coker Valley. And it's, the drainage is a big issue and I do appreciate the meeting that we had with the developers that promised that they would address that. And I know I would prefer that it, it would be something smaller, like townhomes are starting to sound good when you're looking at five stories of, five buildings of three-story apartments on land that's already as high as a second story or at the rooftops of the single-story homes. So I take issue with it, but I don't know what can be done about it and it looks as though the ball is rolling and the ball's in their court. And I did appreciate Johnny Coker's kind words and he said he, he was specifically glad to look out for his neighbors and we were a Coker property at one point in time. And it would seem that Kennedale's just on the fast track to becoming unrecognizable with an emphasis on condos, townhomes, multifamily residences in our particular area. I think it's the very worst place for something that gigantically tall, it'll be like skyscrapers, but they've said they'd try to mitigate it. I'm a person that will have to see something to get the true picture and they said that they would mitigate it as much as possible. But if I had my druthers, I would not be there. And as old as I am, I might not live to see the thing built anyway. But I, I can tell you one thing I'm particularly concerned about is the excavation on that property above there and all the dirt that's going to be moved. And that will go down to our houses like a mudslide and you can't contain that, it's very difficult. And I've seen it happen. It happened at 287 and Sublet, I mean, 287 by Cinemark where they built the, oh, I'm sorry. And mud flooded six homes down there. And there was a fire in the apartments over here behind the Coker property.
See, that's the way to use your time, is you're walking away, keep talking. That's smart. Michael Watson, I saw that you signed up against, but you didn't want to speak. Is he here, Michael Watson? Are you still in that, that mood?
Okay, come on up. Michael Watson, and I, my property is 412 Coker Valley, so right up against the, where it's being developed. Actually, our backyard is in one of the corners where they're building the, the retaining or the retention ponds. Right now, there's a lot of traffic when we try to leave our area. I know it's just going to get a lot worse. And I do have a question as far as if the, if the, the rerouting of Sublet is going to happen regardless, or does that go along with this construction?
Regardless.
Regardless, yeah. So maybe we should wait and see how the traffic flows once that gets in, instead of creating all these extra people in that area at this time. Really, that's all. I've just, really, just wanted to express my objections to it at the current time.
Okay. And you should come back and apply for a board.
Well, probably not, but thank you.
Nobody wanted to apply. All right, so we're down, oh, we have three left, so the three amigos. So I'll bring up Frank Fernandez to conclude the trilogy of Frank Fernandez and the Force.
I don't have that much to say right now, so.
What?
My one and most important, you know, that I consider to be important, these are going to be 280 apartments, right?
Yeah.
280 apartments. Okay, what I'm going to ask is, because the, everybody over here in Kennedale, one of the main problems we're having is that we need more homes for this and we need more homes for that and we need more people that put in water meters. So the water meters, you know, will lower the price of someone else. I think if there is 280 apartments, there should be 280 water meters, okay? So they can contribute the same as everybody else. Don't put a building with 16 apartments and then come back and put one, one-inch water meter and then divide them around 16 on the cost of the sewer and on the cost of the water, okay? So I think that's a fair exchange to be at least treated the same as everyone else in Kennedale. Second thing is, is I'm going to deviate a little bit, but I know that, we don't have a code enforcement yet, do we? We do have one? Okay. One of the things that that code enforcement is going to have to do is go in in Kennedale next to the QT and there's a big old sign right over there. If you look up, you're going to see a sheet, I don't know if it's two by four or three by five or three by four, that is basically just leaning against a sign, just waiting for that wind just to come up one, and you know, we're having more storms coming Thursday. Just to put a little wind under the wind and just blow it into the parkway and hopefully there would not be anybody driving by to get killed or hurt.
Frank, what does this have to do with the P&amp;Z case?
I just wanted to, to, to let you know that that's a dangerous situation.
You could have just called me.
And call you?
I answer your phone, don't.
Okay, that would be fine and I'll leave it at that, but please, you know, I'll tell you what, how about I just take that as a, as a, as a, something that could hurt somebody and it's now on the record.
Okay, thank you, Frank. I know, I know, right? Miracles do happen.
Chad G., 1018 Belmont. And appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I am not here to not as a politician, I have no desire to be a politician. I'm here as an educator and a resident of Kennedale. KISD educates every child that comes through our doors and we do it well. However, the developments you're proposing will affect our district and require many additional resources. The 90-home subdivision at the end of Wildcat Way and the high-density 280 apartment complex on Sublet Road are both in the Patterson Elementary and Arthur Intermediate Attendance Zones. Right now, Patterson is very close to maximum capacity and with a major growth, so would Arthur. These two campuses will be the two most affected campuses as far as facilities, however, additional resources will be required throughout the district. Over the last 15 years, our district has tried to keep portable buildings off our campuses and been very successful in doing so, but these proposed additions will require additional educational space that does not currently exist. In order to accommodate for this growth, the district will be forced to either purchase portable buildings to be used for instructional settings or go to bond to build additional facilities. The addition of the growth in the student population will also increase the number of staff needed as well as impact transportation routes and, and needs district-wide. I noticed earlier on the presentation that the projected revenue was $588,000, I believe, for the school district. Looking at our numbers from the apartment complexes that are currently on our central appraisal district, that's about $27 million from each apartment complex in taxable revenue, which basically comes out to $288,000. Just to put this in perspective, as far as taxing our resources, what I'm talking about, if we sit there and hired four new teachers to handle growth, two at each of those two campuses I just mentioned, at $65,000 a year, that's $270,000 and there goes your taxable revenue. Thank you.
Wait a second before we leave.
I'm sorry?
Stay here. Yeah, you know, I was looking at some of the numbers that have been published and over the last 10 years, the Kennedale ISD has had a flat growth, even though that we've added the Brookstone, we've added Vineyards, that your, your district has not grown with all these new developments that we've come in. Do you have an explanation on why that might be?
I have no idea, but I know if you add in another 90 homes and another 288 apartment complexes in the same attended zone for two schools, you're going to have, especially at an elementary level, you're going to have an impact.
That doesn't seem to have been the case over the last, when we had the Brookstone, the Vineyards, the Hilltop Edition.
I have not researched that, so I cannot answer.
I, I can't. It hasn't happened.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm not sure why suddenly this would make a big difference.
I'm just telling you the facts of the numbers and the numbers are that whatever the $588,000 that you say is going to be generating revenue will not cover the cost of educating the student.
And I'm telling you the numbers, your district has been flat for about nine years.
Thank you.
Richard Weber. Richard, I would think that you would have talked on every issue.
Okay, all right. I save my voice.
Okay.
Richard Weber, 2703 Crestmore Court in Arlington.
Now, wait, before you start, just time. What's wrong with your voice, Richard?
I don't know.
Okay, go ahead.
It's worn out. Last Thursday, I was in Mansfield heading to a 6:00 PM P&amp;Z meeting, so I wound up going through the intersection of 287 and Sublet. I had to wait several cycles of the light to eventually make it through. And this is without Magnolia Hills even being billed yet. Now you're going to do high-density apartments here, 280 units, another 300-plus cars during rush hour? These high-density apartments are the wrong zoning for this property. I wish Joe Teller had been here to sign up and speak, because he tells the story of how the school district bought land just to avoid apartments. The old KISD knew it was a problem. The superintendent's telling you it was a problem. Arlington, apartment-infested Arlington limits their multifamily to 22 units per acre. 280 divided by 10.8 is 25.9 units per acre. That's more than 15% over what Arlington allows. Another problem I have is when the planning director gets up there and shows you a big number as far as this is how it's going to help the KISD generating all this money. Well, the way school funding works in Texas is as the property values get taxed more and contributes to the O and M, then the, the money from the state goes down. So 80% of that number that the planning director puts up there does not help the school district. It comes to it, but 80% of it gets lowered because the state contributes that much less. Now the part, the debt, they have two pieces, O and M and debt service, and the debt service is aided by the increase in. is aided by the increase in value. But 80% of the tax rate for the school district is the O&amp;M, and that doesn't get aided because the state lowers what they pay the school district. That's all I have. You can argue with me something?
No, no. I know it's fair that I wouldn't do that, but I will say that, because I got the email from Joe, and Joe's wrong about this in a way. Joe?
I can show you the facts.
No, I'm going to show you the facts here in a second, Joe. Is that Joe said that, you know, they bought 70 acres, right? Yeah, and that was going to be Section 8 housing?
(inaudible).
Yeah, well, I think that's what was one of the concerns that were sold, if I remember. But this is 11 acres, and it's not, it's not tax-rated housing or anything. So, I mean, you can compare apples and oranges, but I'm not sure that's an accurate comparison necessarily, between 70 acres and 10 acres. But you and I can bake that some other time. At some other place.
(inaudible).
But not a 10-acre tract?
(inaudible).
Yeah, right. Yeah, so this is significantly smaller, though. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, still, I mean, still, you have your objections, but I just wanted to point that out. Alright, last but not least, because it says, "Request to speak last if possible," and I can't refuse Carolyn Coker anything in terms of being able to speak, because she's so sweet, and I don't get a vote anyways, it doesn't matter. So I'm just being nice.
Hi. Good evening from council and guests tonight. Thank you. My name is Carolyn Coker Williamson. I reside, my post office box and mailing address is still in Kennedale. Then my temporary residence is now in Arlington at Fox Run, and it's an independent living community for my husband and I. In summarizing all that has been said before in the P&amp;Z meetings, as well as in the city council meetings, and it's, all that has been said up to this point, you have heard and recanted multiple problems.
You want to back away a little bit from the microphone?
Okay, thank you. You have recanted multiple problems, you have requested many promises, you have heard our many proposals, and you have seen our multiple plans with even revised plans, excuse me. Surely you have observed that all of these have been focused on resolving the water and traffic issues, on preserving your privacy and the beautiful beautification of your neighborhood, on increasing quality retail revenue, and all the while we've considering the lasting value of your homes with matching quality design. All of this is in a community with a 21st century lifestyle that so many seniors and millennials now desire to call home. About 12 years ago, our then 89-year-old mother started asking us about selling her property. Mrs. Coker or her children did not know how to go about taking on such a big project, especially one that had the potential to supply the needs of our roaring city, its schools, and the diverse population. So Vera called on her friend Paul Yarborough of Paco Southwest to seek his advice. Jim Maybach, his son-in-law, answered the call to give her his input. Jim so aptly told her that it would take time, take the right buyer with the right plan and at the right time to maximize her properties' potential and to provide the end result that she dreamed about for her friends, her neighbors, and her beloved community. He told her that she would need to feel comfortable with their plan and have the same sense of the future good of Kennedale that she felt. Jim's advice was to just sit tight and wait a bit, and the time would come. Well, about eight years ago, the family sought to ask the city to consider rezoning of the property to match the comprehensive land plan that was developed for Kennedale.
Carolyn, you've got about five seconds.
Okay. This would make it sellable and just waiting for the right time to come along. In summary, I want to say that our family has felt that the time has come, and we have provided the things for our school district and for the neighbors and friends. We're asking you tonight to consider, it's a hard job you have. We would like for you to approve the planning that is presented to you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, staff. Oh, yeah, I was going to call on you. Come on up. Somebody pointed out that you were waving over there, so I'll make sure we get you in here. I did, I have a very short-term memory. And you can ask whatever his name is over there.
My name is Tracy Hardy, and I live in Kennedale, there at Steeple Chase. I'm opposed to the rezoning for the following reason. When we go to sell our properties, it may make the resale less desirable for potential buyers and make it harder for us to sell our properties or take longer. I'm opposed because of privacy and traffic. This property is directly behind my property. The elevation is so high. You have pictures, I believe my neighbor brought pictures. The property is so high, some of the houses, you can't even see the windows. You can only see the tops of the roofs of the houses. With that being said, we've seen a lot of pictures, we've heard a lot of things, made a lot of promises, but we haven't seen anything in writing to hold them accountable. The city codes, it allows it to be within 20 feet of our backyard and our fences. With three-story buildings that are close, that close, that much higher in elevation, they will be able to see everything directly in our backyards, even every move we make. I know they promised to put a wooden fence or wall, trees, but from a three-story building, I still feel that they will be able to see in our backyard. Yes, they said they would have setbacks of more than 200 feet for some areas, and they said a lot of things, but nothing in writing. What if, for example, six months later, before they say that, they said they won't start the project in a year, but say six months down the road, if their budget changes and they decide to make cutbacks and decide not to put in the extras that would help with our privacy, or the builder decides to change their mind and decides to sell to another developer, and that developer has other plans in mind and decide to build closer, as close as 20 feet, and don't put in trees or the other things that was promised? Once it is approved, how can the city control this and make sure our privacy is not taken? Also, traffic. Traffic right now is already hard, getting in and out of our properties, going to work and coming back, especially when 287 is backed up. A lot of people know to take Sublet as an alternate route down to Mansfield Highway or to Bowman Springs. And now, that down about a high school, they're already putting in more houses, 90 more houses, and up here, 280, I think 280 units or something like that is coming. I know that they have intentions of, you know, the traffic turning to the right going out 287, but that may not always be the case, especially when traffic is backed up on 287. I know that they're going to build new freeways and add more road and stuff, but that's down the road. What about now? How's that going to affect us now with all these additional traffic coming in?
Tracy?
Okay. Okay. Flooding. Flooding is already flooded. Sometimes the roads are closed. With that being said, I'm asking you guys to, not to approve this, especially at this time, maybe when the roads are rebuilt and other things are looked into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I did forget you. You did have a paper turned in. That's my fault. Alright, staff response.
I didn't hear any specific questions. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I imagine the developer can respond to some of the concerns.
Okay, the developer, would you like to make a response? I heard some questions about drainage. What happens if you guys don't get your funding and somebody else comes in?
Sure. So as far as drainage goes, really, a project like this will be the only long-term solution, really. I don't feel like an A3 development could bear the cost of putting in a detention plus piping it out to the stormwater system. Also, I heard about the apartments being too close to the residents. The current zoning, A3, has a 15-foot setback. So you could put a two-story building 15 feet away right now. And also, really, the traffic going on to Joplin and turning onto Sublet is, it's sharing a light with the retail. When the retail light turns green, because there's folks leaving the retail, that allows for traffic to flow. And right now, there's no traffic coming from south of Joplin. This will balance that out, and it's actually a very, very good location for it. And to be honest, really, we're, we have the walkability to a high-quality project that allows you to park the car and walk to restaurants. That really helps with traffic. There was also a study done in the last couple of years by Frisco. Frisco's seen huge, tremendous growth and has had a lot of apartments built, and they've gone through a lot of cases like this. And they went and they looked at it, and on the urban apartments, they found out that only 10%, there's only 10% demand for students, so...
Officer, arrest that man.
Sure.
Now, don't really arrest him.
Yeah. Fun. So, in an urban setting, where this property is a walkable urban setting, the load is mostly elementary students, and it's 10% of units, whereas single-family is anywhere between 50 to 70 typically percent. So A3 on this site, if you have 50 units there, times 50, 25 students. So if you have 280 units, times 10, it's 28 students. So really, the increase in students is negligible, and the amount of taxes that development is bringing for multifamilies, 18,000 per student that goes there, versus the single-family is closer to four, which is less than the cost of educating. And this place will actually house educators and first responders and anyone else that wants to live there. And there's typically discounts in apartments, and there's typically, you know, a patrol officer that stays there. So typically, an off-duty officer will get a unit for a discounted rate, and they will be the community patrol officer. And that's how I've operated apartments in the past, and that's how institutional operators handle that. And so, this also, this development is in Kennedale, and so as far as crime goes, it's going to be policed by Kennedale. It's not in Arlington. It's in Kennedale. So there's also, there's a, it's basically a business that the apartment is. It has, there's a full-time manager. An apartment of this scale has a full-time manager, an assistant manager, a leasing person, maybe two or three, a lead maintenance person, an assistant maintenance person, a porter that makes sure it looks clean and nice. You know, a development of this size can have a lot of amenities with it to keep it nice long-term, really. And that's the benefit. As far as the drainage goes, do you want to?
Can I ask a question about the grade?
Sure.
When you come up with the grade, are you coming up with, from Sublet Road back? When you decide to be the grade?
Right. That's the flat. That's right. And so on the backside, if you can pull up the presentation again?
Do you know how many feet of drop that is from where it's at now?
Sure. So...
What's the question?
He's wondering how many feet of drop. So on the, on the top, on the top, if you look at the dotted line, that's the current grade. So on the backside, in order to build the detention, we will have to add a retaining wall and put a fence on top.
Well, where that area is at is extremely high. I'm talking about like from Sublet Road. Are you going to be using that as the grade?
Pardon?
For where Sublet Road is at.
Right.
Because that's the back of the property, which is extremely high.
This, this is basically looking down towards Sublet Road, on the bottom. So this, this little berm here, it's, in actuality, it drops down. It's a lot steeper than that.
There, now you can see the natural grade.
Oh. Yeah, so the natural grade, oh, you're talking about up here? Okay. So, yeah, so that's, that's the center of the site essentially. I think it's 684, I believe. And then...
It's about one story we're dropping it.
Right.
So we're bringing a story off the hill in the center.
And then raising, we're raising it on the, on the south side of the site. We're raising it by about six feet in order to build retention, so that, a retaining wall, so that we can then put a detaining wall in. So we're actually going lower than the current grade there, so we can collect the water and get it into the stormwater system.
Yeah. I can address a couple of the concerns that we've heard about the drainage on the property. I know in our community meeting, we got some concerns about the adjacent homeowners to the west and south have, as it stands, they currently get a lot of drainage when it rains from that property because of the grades and where it sits compared to them. I think what will actually happen, generally estimating probably, I think it's about seven to eight acres that currently drains onto the west and south properties.
Can you give me a second? Hey, guys? Guys? Joe? They can't hear up front. They're saying they can't hear up front.
(inaudible).
Yeah, so...
(inaudible).
Yeah, I'm just saying that she said she couldn't hear.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So the advantage, actually, of this development is that it will, it will, it won't do anything but decrease the amount of stormwater drainage that is coming onto those properties because of the way that the site will be graded, as well as the detention that's proposed on the property that will take, it'll pretty much take the property and self-contain the drainage to the pre-development conditions before it sends the drainage into a pipe system, as you'll see in the middle image in the kind of pink with the arrows. That will go into a pipe system into the existing drainage in Sublet Road, which is a city of Arlington drainage system. So, I mean, long story short, it actually should improve the drainage conditions on those nearby home sites.
The creek that goes through Steeple Chase there, does that water flow north or south?
The water flows north, and so all of this, all of the drainage that goes off of this property will actually flow into the creek downstream of where we are.
So the blue line going across to the middle, how is that getting across? Who is across?
Well, there's a, there's a culvert there, and then we'll, there's actually a drainage pipe in the, in the ground now, under Sublet, and it will, will collect underground into that pipe system and outfall north of Sublet Road.
Yeah, on our property?
No, it's, it's north of your property. It's out of your development.
This, this is the, this...
This, this is the, this.
We already had that question with the roads. Did you ever talk to the bridges all the way up to the median water that it stretches past the road? I think, I think she was thinking that you were one of the residents.
Yes, I was focused on the Steeplechase development.
Any questions about drainage?
I'll add one thing, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to help clarify and maybe alleviate some concerns. The amount of water or runoff that you see coming out of that system currently will not be increased. Because of the detention that's being put on the site, we'll detain, basically build a system that slows the flow of the increased runoff from the development, so that whatever comes off the property is at the same rate as what's currently undeveloped. So you won't see any increase in runoff or drainage or water that comes from storms.
That's federal law.
Yes. Yes.
I think I have a, I think I have a topo map in here as well. So just back to the question, Josh, this 660 here, see how it drops all the way off to 650 in the neighboring yards, and then the peak elevation is 684. This, this grade, the 660, essentially will be continued to the back and will taper off as it gets closer to the back. You see 660 over here as well? So that's pretty much the match grade. It will slope down a little bit in order to, to drain the site properly into the detention system and get the water out. That's really kind of the match there. Does that answer?
All right. Thank you very much. All right, I entertain a motion for PZ case 1909.
I'll make a motion that we approve, case PZ 1909.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just heard the number 280 thrown out there. I've been looking at the multifamily standards that we just recently approved and the rubric that we have for our residential, and I'm seeing that we have 16 units per acre as a max. When was that changed and where?
We changed it with a new code.
We did?
It's a form-based code rather than a number per acres.
Okay. So I'm not reading that in our ordinance.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but the ordinance was to replace the spatial requirements for the multifamily.
Okay.
Other question?
Yeah, and then I know Joplin Road has some direction of where it's going. Where is that going? Like, what's the future transportation plan there on Joplin Road?
Well, the developers, gosh, it keeps shocking me. The developers of the storage facility had to rebuild that road. It's going to be a two-lane road, right? A four-lane road on Joplin? Okay. So they, the developers of the storage facility are doing the two lanes, and this developer will have to do the other two lanes on the other side. If that answers.
But on our.
It's not going through.
So it's going to become a dead end then, or does it still have?
Arlington Road is not a city of Kennedale Road.
Okay.
Not in our.
But there's, there's nowhere that that could go from this point, though, is there? I mean, or it's a long shot getting somewhere? You can answer that? Please.
Our transportation.
I represent some other land further south on Joplin.
Perfect.
It doesn't connect. So when all storage got their zoning approved, which I worked on, they had to build their half of the road on the side of Arlington. This developer has to build your half, his expense, on the side of Kennedale, and the future lands, the future transportation thoroughfare plan for Arlington is to connect it down through the rest of the development to the asphalt road that's existing. There's about three tracts of land that are in between that, so whenever they develop, they got to build the road. And I've verified that.
So it's not swinging into us at all? It's going down and back out towards the highway?
Provide additional relief to the area. Yep.
Any other questions? Well, then please enter your vote. We'll see how this one goes. All right, now I need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. We're adjourned.